This is regularly scheduled meeting. And it's been advertised to the council of us. Appreciate you for doing that for us. Um, to begin, we'll have a roll call. Councilman Riley here, Councilman White here, Councilman Boozembar here, Councilman Barrett here, and Councilman Allen here. Um. To begin, we'll have a prayer, let's see. I lost my agenda. God, thanks. Um, we'll have a prayer by Councilman Allen. And then if you would follow me in the place of.
Spirit and Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to. Me here as a council community this evening, thankful for the blessings we have to serve in such a great town among such great people. And we ask to be inspired and led and directed to the will of the people whom we serve. And we want to recognize those who have served this great country, those who continue to do so. And once again, we're thankful for the opportunities we've been blessed with and say the same in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. Let's go ahead and look at the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any amendments or corrections to previous minutes? Seeing that, we'll entertain a motion. Move to approve. I didn't notice one, sorry. Yeah. It said it was a regularly scheduled one? It is. It was? It was. Okay. Yeah. So we have a motion by Councilman White. I'll second that. Seconded by Councilman Barrett, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Motion's approved. We have at the beginning of our meeting, a public comment period. Uh, time allotted. Any person in the audience can come up for three minutes and address the council. And uh, for up to, well, three minutes each person. And we'll give up to fifteen minutes, but at a time, is there anyone here that would like to take advantage of that opportunity tonight? Seeing that, we'll move forward with our next agenda item. Um, this is resolution twenty twenty-three oh three, you have that. This is a public hearing to receive input. With respect to the issuance of Roosevelt City's water revenue bonds and one or more series in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed one point five two-five million for improvements to the issuer's water system and related improvements. So what this has to do with is a two million gallon water tank that we've been approved for through C I B. It was a fifty-fifty split, fifty percent grant, fifty percent loan. Um, do you wanna, I know that's come before the council before, but Ryan, would you kind of let the public know a little more detail on on that and the thing, Kurt? Um, on the tank itself?
Yeah, we're listening to the project. So we've had several public hearings prior to going to the C I B. Um, to get the tank. The tank is a two million gallon storage tank at the top of the system that we're going after. It's currently replacing a three hundred thousand gallon tank that is almost forty years old. So this tank is definitely gonna help the system from the top all the way down as a whole. So we went into the C I B. Um, and got a fifty-fifty at a half percent. So the loan that we'll be having is one point.
Uh, one million, two hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Two hundred sixty-eight at a half percent. There any questions?
Any questions from the council?
And this was just a made, Ryan, because of the situation we're in anticipating growth as well as just being able to uh, meet the needs of the cities, the city residents, right? Is that why we're doing it?
Right. Um, the previous tank, the one we have now currently is we've had numerous different kind of um, problems with it back since we have received this, they've got approval on the C I B, we've drained the tank three times. And it's been from a wreck into a pot, into a power plant and powered outages with winds and about the wind down with the C interview. So a ton of different scenarios, right? So having the two million in there is just gonna buy us a lot of time for our storage. Storage is the biggest key here to make sure we can stay and take care of these problems and keep people in water. Otherwise, we're just running out of water, introducing air in the line and causing other issues.
The other thing that we talked about that was obvious is the amount, you know, every time those pumps kick, kick on, we try to keep the water level at a, at a reasonable level. Uh, we're paying surcharges and things like that, moonlight, every time those pumps draw, you know, to run a pump, it's not that big of a deal. But the starting of a pump, uh, they have, um, yeah. Charge, you know, additional charge and things like that, wear and tear. So it's just, it'll help.
Yeah, our system's more efficient.
Yeah, I remember the discussions on that. I just wanna make sure on record that we mentioned that as well. So I appreciate the mayor bringing that up as well, because I knew that was the other issue with the pumps.
It has the payments in here on how far they'll go, twenty fifty-one. You know, we start out at thirty-nine and by the end it's forty-five thousand.
And over the life of the loan at one half of one percent, it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars in interest. So it's a pretty big deal.
From learning Bible to thirty, thirty years, remaining thirty years, pay a hundred thousand, and then you're a high rate of achievement, you know? And just so you know, we just sent out the R F Q to the public in the newspaper and everything to where we can choose our engineer. Hopefully in the next city council meeting, we'll know who they are and we'll go forward and hopefully get the bid processing going here in the winter. And we can break down as soon as weather allows, so.
I wanna comment on that. Uh, as far as our R F Q process or our procurement process goes, one of the things that we, I would like to see happen in the future is that when we, before we start a R F Q project like this, we do the R F Q process right off the beginning. That way whoever, whatever engineer firm gets that design or due to where it's a design and a construction, but either way that's done previously. So at least that engineering firm knows they have the project to this point and then we may have to do it again. Or they have the project from beginning to end and therefore we can. It makes more sense to do it at the beginning and then just stick with the same engineer through the whole project versus trying to switch gears or.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
Is it going up next to the, near the current three hundred thousand tank?
Yeah, we're actually gonna try and utilize that three hundred thousand as kind of a sand trap. We pump a lot of sand, so instead of cleaning out a two million gallon tank, it's a lot easier to clean out three hundred. And so hopefully we'll have some good engineers on board making source house down on how we can utilize.
That would be cool, that would be cool to have now.
So we can still utilize the three hundred thousand?
Yeah, we'll have two point three there. It's, it's in good shape, it's just way too small.
Right.
For what we do.
And we're seeing if we might well, um, they've just got a permit to add more connections in Charmel Acres area, which is gonna put that much more strain on our upper system, which is gonna impact that tank and that upper system directly, so. Great, thanks, Ryan. Any other comments from the council? Seeing that, we'll consider ourselves in a public hearing, we would open it up to the public for comment. Uh, if you take an opportunity to comment, please come to the podium and state your name, um, for the record. Are there any that would like to take opportunity to just comment? While you're thinking about that, um, last letter from one, and I'll just read it out there. Uh, Linda Conde, um, wrote a letter. She said, this is in response to a press for public comment notice that was included in my city water invoice regarding the loan from the community impact board. Uh, and I think what she's referring to is this, uh, the comment hearing and the public hearing that we had previously about the same project. This is the fourth, by the way, uh, public hearing that we've had on this project. After reading this notice, I am stuck at the lack of information regarding to what the loan is being stopped, which is for improvements to water delivery system at least. Some general information about that should have been included in the notice. If, if it is for additional expansion of the city water lines, then that should have been mentioned. In my personal situation, there is a severe problem with acquiring water meter locations on Seminole Lane due to the high pressure supposedly in the ancient water lines that runs along Seminole Lane. If this loan would address this situation, I wanna hear about it. In my opinion alone, of this magnitude should come before the voters for approval. I will be attending the meeting on October twentieth, I sincerely hope our information will be provided as to whether this loan is being stopped through C I B. I don't know if she's here. But seeing that she's not here, just to address that really quickly. Um, again, this is the fourth public hearing we've had. Uh, it's very specific, it's always been a two million gallon tank at the top of our system. Um, if anybody would like to take opportunity, go back and look at our meeting minutes. We do have attachments, uh, we have the resolutions and everything on those meeting minutes on the Utah Public Notice website, that's U N P C dot com or dot gov. And you can go there and find all that information. So I apologize if, if there was, um, if we, if there was some batedness in what we're doing, but try to make sure that we clarify that. And again, if anybody has any questions, you can go directly to those uh, meeting minutes and find those packets with all the information there, so. Uh, anybody else like to take opportunity to to address the council in that public hearing? Seeing that, we'll consider ourselves back into regular session. And unless there's any other uh, comment or discussion, we'll entertain a motion. Motion we approve.
I'll second it.
Then we have a motion by Councilman Boozembar and a second by Councilman White. Um, we'll go real call, uh, Councilman Riley?
Aye.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Boozembar?
Yes.
Councilman Barrett?
Yes.
And Councilman Allen?
Yes.
And that's five yeses. Uh, motion passes, so we'll move forward with that. And then next, council meeting will decide on the engineer. We'll give that thing to him. So, alright. Next agenda item, um, appointments, A, value bets, I saw you made it in. Uh, we'll get some time to you and remind me your name.
Uh, Janice Shipman.
Janice Shipman? And then we'll allow Janice to tag, she had something to, to say as well, so we'll allow her some of your time or, if that's okay. So, how is yours?
Um, just an update on the animal shelter investigation, where we're at, what, what's going on?
What, what can you tell? I wish I knew more. And I'll tell you what I know and then if there's anything to add, please add it. But um, the investigation has been, it has been finalized or finished as far as the investigation portion of it. That information has been given to U N County Attorney's Office and they are going through that uh, information right now. And so we haven't gotten an answer from them yet, but it has moved from investigating part to the review part. And we've given it to U N County to review. Uh, apparently, and it's probably rightfully so, but the Duchene County attorneys, I imagine, felt best to give that to a, a third party or, you know, somebody that is even a little further away than just Duchene County. So they're reviewing that right now. I do know that the city attorney, um, hand delivered that paperwork to them and so hopefully we're close.
Do we have a timeline at all or kind of?
And we, we thought about whether or not to try to give a timeline, but we have no idea. Unfortunately, I wish we did. And uh, we thought we'd put a timeline on it, that people would be like, well, the timeline's up and we just haven't, this is new to me and, and a few of us. And so I have no idea, other than we're pushing it as quickly as we can. I can see Scott here.
So I'm already chiming in, so basically, this is Scott.
This is Scott, and Lysa, he's our new city manager, I just wanted to introduce you. So anyway.
So basically, it's gonna be one of the district attorney's office to kind of review it. A lot of the times they'll ask for additional information with the case. So they'll ask the best agent to go back to follow up with certain information. Depending on how much of that takes place will depend on how long they get to the findings. So it all depends on what information the D A needs to make that decision. They may need a little bit, they may need a lot. So that's why they can't give you a timeframe on something like that.
Yeah, that's why I answered the question as much as. I know Janice has some questions specific to policies and the budget and everything. And obviously, if there's a better venue for this, we'd be happy to schedule meetings, love to schedule something like that.
You know what? Let's hear what you have to say and we may do that, because right now, to be honest, we, we, once the investigation's done and we're actually, we have uh, policy procurement in our uh, agenda later on too. We are looking at all of our policies right now. This, this isn't something we just met, oh, or we have, this is, you know, you may, we, we thought with this, we're, we're gonna look at all of our policies. So the investigation will help drive a lot of those policies. But go ahead and, and let's hear what you have to say and then we'll, we'll answer what we can and some of it we may not have a good answer for.
My only other question is, sorry, Janice. I, is there a plan in place to compensate you, because we've been outworked for nine weeks now? Um, I mean, that's, we'll have time to be without, what do you do?
Right, I don't know, you know, I don't know that we even really talk about that. That's something we can look at and, and see what we feel comfortable with. I think once the investigation comes back, that will determine, I mean, obviously, if, if everything was hunky-dory and, and there's nothing, you know, then that's something that I think we would probably be wanting to entertain as well, so. We'll, we'll look at it, and we wanna be fair, that's the thing, we wanna be fair and we wanna do what's right for them.
And my last comment is just that pet care professionals have a big irony to it at the same rate that police officers fathers. These women literally give everything they have for this job and it's, it's hard, if you're not saying emotionally, physically. They, they've given everything they have and I feel like they, they give it all, I appreciate it at the moment. Um, so I'm gonna conclude.
Uh, good evening councilmen, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, I'll try to make this brief and just hit on a couple few points on what is uh, a huge injustice for the people and animals of Roosevelt City and Duchene County. Uh, we're a growing area, we need more resources for our animals, domestic and farm. The needs of the community have grown exponentially and you have failed to grow with it. The expectations of animal parent control have been changing for many years. They're no longer just dogs and cats, they've become family members. And the way they've been regarded by this council is nothing short of gross negligence. Uh, when one of our family members goes missing, animal patrol and animal shelter has a civic duty to take care of the resident's property, uh, including but not limited to minimal pet care medication, if a pet comes in hit by a car, safe from ill nurse, uh, intake vaccinations, and giving the public a chance to come in and search for the lost pets during regular business hours. Um, let's talk about the regular business hours, um, that these people have to search for their kids or to come in and adopt a new family member. Uh, quite frankly, it's appalling. Um, pre-COVID, our shelter was open Monday through Thursday, twelve to four thirty. That's less than twenty hours. Um, when I moved here, I thought it seemed ridiculous and I, I've felt this way for great years. And I finally made some phone calls to other shelters in northern Utah to compare them to our shelter, which has, um, last time I checked, two full-time employees, two part-time employees and a budget of approximately a hundred and thirty-eight thousand a year. Some accounting has a brand new facility, indoor/outdoor runs for these animals, open Monday through Friday, eight to four. Three full-time employees, uh, with full city benefits, uh, four part-time employees and a budget of two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. West Jordan, seven staff members, full benefits, open Monday through Friday, ten to six, budget four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Murray, open Monday through Friday, ten to five. Newvis, South Valley, Monday through Friday, eight to four. Um, want something closer for comparison? Okay, how about Naples, the U N account? Open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, eight to five, Wednesday, eight to noon. Seven full-time employees with benefits and a budget of eight hundred and four thousand dollars a year. Uh, finally, I talked to a wonderful gentleman, um, his name is Ian, uh, Ian Williams from Sandy City Animal Control. He's the director of the animal shelter and board of Utah State Animal Control Officers. Uh, their shelter is also open Monday through Friday, eight thirty to five, Saturdays. They have a staff member on call, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. They also have five animal control officers, six staff members, budget eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, I talked to Ian for over an hour. Um, he did say that he would love a phone call from a member of you guys and he can, you know, help talk you through some of the issues that we have to keep with the plan and help the situation. So I asked you to ask yourself, what is the purpose of animal control and care? I myself, I, I wasn't sure the exact definition either, so I reached out to Rachel Peeling. She's the advocacy director for the Community Society of Utah. Um, I'm not gonna read her email, I did print it for you. Um, it's a, it's a public safety and health issue, it really is, having stray dogs at large running through the community, having feral cats spreading disease throughout the community. Um, the time for change is now, the time to act is now. We're their voice and we will not be quiet until the animals' lives and care matter, uh, because they do. Um, there's two thousand two hundred and fifty households in Roosevelt City. If they pay just five dollars a month in taxes, that's an extra hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year budget for the animal shelter. Five dollars. Um, Duchene County has a population of nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five and the shelter serves the county. And I'm pretty sure the county residents would not mind pitching in some extra tax monies to make sure that their animals, their family members are taken care of in case they get loose. Please don't just dismiss this issue, just figure it out, because what you're doing, just ignoring it, is not working and is costing lives. And I printed out five, I didn't, I didn't know there was gonna be seven.
That's okay.
So that is from, uh, the director of the community.
Now, how many households did you say were in Roosevelt City?
Uh, two thousand two hundred and seventy-five.
And you said five dollars a year or five?
Five dollars a month.
A month.
It would be an extra hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Sixty dollars a year. We'll look into a few of those things.
Thank you. And I, I have Ian's phone number, if you would like Ian's phone number, he really does wanna talk to you.
Who is Ian?
Uh, he is, um, on the board of directors for the Utah State Animal Control Officers and he's also the director of Sandy, uh, City Shelter.
Okay, well, we're looking at some of those, we're looking at some of those things right now. I know our, as city managers, there's a couple of other shelters to get policies. Um, and we'll look at that, um, obviously. You know, yeah, all we can say is we'll, we'll look into it and see. Where we do represent the city as a whole, um, there are some, I think there are some, growing up in Roosevelt, there are some strong feelings both ways. And so we just need to make sure that we're doing what the majority of the people want. And, and we appreciate you coming in and revoicing your concerns and that has definitely, uh, given us reason to, to reflect and, and think about it and we appreciate that, so. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time, Paul.
Thank you. Great. Um, next item. Recycle Ops is, anyone with Recycle Ops here tonight? Oh, yes, sir. Okay.
Derek McCandless.
Derek, come on up.
Sir, what was your name?
Derek McCandless.
Go ahead, Derek. Um, here to represent Recycle Ops and, um, offering, uh, completely voluntary subscription, uh, recycling service to the city. It's, again, comes at no cost to the city. Residents wanna sign up, they can sign up. Uh, obviously, we need a minimum, um, number of households to make it work a while.
What's your minimum, do you know?
Offer the service, um, with two thousand households, probably about a hundred.
Okay, that's it.
Um, so Recycle Ops is based out of, uh, south Salt Lake. Uh, we operate in about forty cities in forty states. Uh, the nearest one to Roosevelt would be Burnell. Um, we've got about a hundred and fifty customers there. Uh, we, we operate, operate MRF in Heber. Um, a MRF stands for material recovery facility. We actually typically, you know, separate out the plastic and paper and cardboard and, um, sell it off to companies that actually turn it into new things. Um, which would be a, we don't have MRFs everywhere we operate. We also operate in, um, our second week's market was Texas. Um, I see that Roosevelt's the energy hub in Utah, I'm actually from Houston, so. I come from the same background. Anyway, uh, Heber's only MRF where we actually separate materials, so the, the advantage, um, we can offer Roosevelt is that uh, we've been taking material through our facility. And uh, that I can guarantee is actually getting recycled. Because there's a lot of negative press, um, about recycling plastics and whatnot. And some of it's true, some of it's not true, um, but, um, obviously, we give a list of what's acceptable. Um, it'd be, uh, number one, two plastics, which is basically any container with a lid. Um, you know, plastic bottles, uh, water bottles, you know, Coke bottles, Sprite, Pepsi. I wish you that, you know? See, we're in new gotsets, is it a Coke or Pepsi? Well. Texas.
Texas, it's Coke and not Pepper, so I just gotta make sure I'm right.
Um, you know, obviously milk bottles, you know, basically anything that comes from your, your kitchen or, uh, you know, pantry, plastic bottle, that's recycled. Um, obviously, paper, aluminum steel, all that, you know, cans, uh, whatnot. All your standard recyclers, we, uh, we'd accept. I understand, uh, from Ryan Sted, founder, CEO, who's, uh, had conversations with, uh, city manager that, um, uh, to the extent we brought service, the city would prefer carts as opposed to our normal service, which is we provide bags and people who put bags at the curb, um, we're fine for buying carts. That'd be a little higher set fee we charge, probably thirty dollars, like as a one-time set fee. A monthly charge would be twelve dollars a month. Um, and, um, honestly, the, the program could be, uh, we do offer, uh, glass as an added on service. Um, it's, it's not required, the base fee would be twelve dollars a month. Going ahead, glass, it'd be an extra seven dollars a month, obviously goes out, same glass, heavy. Um, it would have to be kept separate, because when glass, uh, breaks and mixes in with all the rest of your recycling, it actually can mess it up and make it non-recyclable, which is why we keep it separate. Um, and this is why it also costs more to, um, to process. And, um, through the day, if the, uh, city wanted to get behind it and, and have a, a cooperation with us, um, our experience is that, again, it's voluntary s- service. We're not asking for the city for any money at all. To be clear, by the way, clear. But if the city wants it to happen in your city, uh, and the city really wants to get behind it, our experience is that, uh, over time, roughly ten to twenty percent of the population is, cares enough. Uh, for one, there's a way to make it work. Um, and. It doesn't get any better than good old American capitalism that you can choose to do it or you can choose not to. Here's our price, wanna sign up? Great, you don't, that's okay. Costs the city nothing. The big thing is you should save the city a little bit of money. Why don't I say the city or say, I don't know, your waste contract is with your waste provider, but obviously, whatever we take, they're not saying anything. So the small savings.
Any, any questions?
How do you set up the payment for the, for the people to decide to?
We manage all of it, they sign up with us, they provide their credit card information. It's set up like a, like a Netflix subscription, um, charging the first month. Uh, it's a month-to-month, which is not a little annual. You can sign, you can sign up and prepay for a, a annual if you like. Uh, some people like that, there's one, one payment every twelve months and you'll be done with it. But if you don't sign it month-to-month, you cancel the next month, cancel the next month and you're done. Uh, but we do require a credit card.
You mentioned you could do cards, I'm assuming, kind of like. You mentioned you could do carts, I'm assuming, kind of like trash can, like.
It's a, it would be a fifty gallon.
And that would be at the person's house?
Correct. We provide it with thirteen gallon bags. Because ninety percent of people use a little thirteen gallon can in their kitchen. Where you put your recycling, tie it back, put it in your cart. We come by, we're not using garbage trucks. Just gain this little minor benefit, we're not adding, you know, weight to your city streets. We'll hire multiple drivers with their own pickup truck and trailer, and we'll haul it two hours to Heber and sort it out.
So they have to put the bags in the containers, and then guys just come by grabbing out of the containers?
That's right, yep. Because again, we're, you know, just imagine, you know, the driver coming to pick up if it was all loose in there.
Right.
That's paying a lot to stop, so that's why we have people bags, especially. On average, they're gonna use four bags, four to six bags every two weeks, twice a month.
Do they replace those for the people, or?
We do, annually we provide you bags.
And so how often do you pick up?
It could be twice a month, bi-weekly, or Burnell's twice monthly. So rat-wise, if we kind of swap weeks within, that would make a lot of sense. But again, it's a little sub thing, but you know, twice a month is twenty-four pickups a year. Every other week is twenty-six pickups.
So one of the, you know, when this came to the council before, how long ago was this? Two years?
No, it was just last.
Oh, yeah, it was about a year and a half ago, right?
Year and a half ago, okay.
There, you know, there were some people in the community that really liked it, some people that were really against it, which I didn't completely understand because again, it's just that you wanna pay for it and do it, then you pay for it and do it. There were some, there were some concerns about, you know, hey, is this really getting to the, is this really being recycled or are they just picking it up?
We would invite anyone that wanted to come check out our MRF. Other than that, I don't know. As an industry, I don't know how else to answer that question, but I mean, it's going on burn in here. I welcome anyone of you to come check it out. It's nothing sexy or pretty or anything, but it's a whole bunch of recyclables that goes in. We've got conveyor belt, we've got six to eight sorters depending on the day. You know, we're putting number one into this bin, number two colored, and that bin, number two natural, and that bin, paper, and this bin. Cardboard goes off to the side, it all gets baled up. Got a whole bunch of bales in the back of our yard. We get a truckload, which is roughly twenty thousand pounds of any other given materials, that's enough to sell. And I can, it's a, the MRF is net cost for us. It's cheaper than us hauling all the way to Salt Lake, but I can assure you, we are not getting rich off of some plastic and paper and cardboard.
Well, I just wanna make sure that, you know, the people that have those questions, those questions could be satisfied if you think you've done that.
Off the record, if I can, we would, we list.
Can you stop the video?
Quite honestly, off the record, we'd say plastic one, two, there's a market for those. Yeah, we can actually sell those, people love them. Three to seven plastics, which is your bags, your styrofoam cups, your solo cups, there is just, there's no market for those, just they're a toy. That's all we put on there, but people will put them in there anyway. They will, which is why I'm saying this is off the record. Well, what we do at our MRF, which very few MRFs do, is there is a company called GeoCycle. Have you heard of it? It's in, it's about, about an hour north of Heber. And they actually will take three to seven plastics, technically they'll take any plastics, but we'll take three to seven plastics and they use it to fuel their cement kiln. So we actually do bale that stuff up and send it to the cement kiln, which is about three times the cost of sending it to a landfill. We do that because that's our common mission. We're, all we do is recycle, we don't do trash. It's all we care about. Obviously, we wanna make money at it, but it's also part of our corporate mission. We do that, clearly we wanna advertise that because for obvious reasons, it costs a section of money, but that's what we do.
You know, it makes me wonder why with trash in general, why we haven't figured out a way to do exactly what the cement kiln does and incinerate it and burn it in a way that doesn't cause major toxic pollution. But.
So they grow up our landfills and our seams, either oceans and stuff.
So it's actually pretty cool because the cement kiln's gonna have its own regardless. So to the extent we or anyone else can find plastic, we'll use that for fuel. If no one can find the plastic, they use coal. It just works. So it's an offset call that, like that, three to seven is getting at least a second use. I wouldn't say it's recycled, but it's second use. But actually, there's some residue that gets turned into actual cement.
I was gonna ask if the emissions on the plastics, burning the plastics is equivalent to coal? If they're able to capture and make it clean there? Because there's emissions for the plastic as they burn that, and emissions for coal, are they creating a wonder do, do they have a way of catching some of that?
You have sent the DJ on that. I'm sorry, it's a fantastic question, I'm sorry I don't have an answer. And I personally like burning my own garbage to make electricity or something. I mean, seriously, that's, I mean, even today, all plastic is, is stored energy. The shame in plastic isn't that it's made, it's that it's not all recycled. That's the shame.
Any other questions for Derek?
Not for you, but would this have any impact or conflict with our contract?
That's one thing that we might have to look into.
That's all you guys.
So I got a contractor engaged, but I think we changed our contract a little while.
Yeah, we actually did our RFP for recycling, we, we, they, one of our favorite motions table discussion or the, you know, it was a discussion for recycling until the next RFP. But can we reopen that? Because I mean, we're having a discussion, I don't know how that all works.
I think we oughta, I think it merits looking at it. And see what we can do. And then we have a contract with, there is a mandate, and I don't know how, how reaching it is, but with Duchene County in that, all the refuse that's created here in Duchene County has to go to the landfill because of the bond that they've secured to expand the landfill. Now, there's some employees at Duchene County that I've talked to that have said there's ways around that, and there's some that say, no, there's not, you have to do that. So we'll get down to the bottom of that as well. I think, I feel like there's a way that we can allow this, and personally, I like choice. I like people having the ability to have a choice, and so I'd like to pursue those.
So does Wasatch County, that's where Heber City is, and don't we share the landfill with them?
Yeah.
Do they not have that same long place in their county?
I don't know that they could.
Okay. It's just weird that we would share casks and build that landfill and then our county would require it.
We have fourteen hundred residential customers in Wasatch County and about sixty commercial. I didn't mention that, we're happy to pick up commercial, it's not just residential. Obviously, commercial would be on a case-by-case on pricing because it's all, you know, volume rate. We're happy to pick up commercial. And on the commercial side, honestly, it's as impactful as anything. They generate a ton of cardboard.
So you have a market for cardboard then, to sell cardboard?
Yes.
Okay. Because I don't think it would be commercial companies that I've seen bales of cardboard behind their.
Well, they probably have it, they all do that. But smaller businesses probably don't, they are. Usually, typically grocery stores.
Yeah.
But smaller, I'm sure you got a bunch of small businesses that all generate three or four X cardboard individual household.
What about the newspaper?
Yeah.
The only reason I ask is because every time I go to the post office, they have a trash can full of newspaper. Because people take their mail out of their box, take the newspapers, throw them away, and then walk out.
So we have a few US Postal Service recipients, and I think that's a separate deal. They have to, postal service would have to decide.
So we're happy to pick up. Well, for me personally, I appreciate you, Kevin. I think last time there was a miscommunication on time or whatever, and you weren't able to be here, a representative from your company wasn't able to be here, but I appreciate you being able to answer some of those questions and help us understand a little more of what you're doing and where it's going. And for us, to be able to answer those questions to the public makes that a lot easier. And so, like I said, as for me, I don't know if we need a motion to move forward with maybe looking into that, but if you feel we do, let's.
I think we need to research the dump, the landfill, sorry, we also need to, you know, our contract with.
So from an environmental perspective, there is no MRF closure. We can't be beat from an environmental perspective. It is a matter of your contract and do you wanna help spread the word?
Yes, I just had something, I mean, let's say the, our bureaucracy prevents us from, as a city, contracting with somebody. Our citizens do not have a contract with the landfill. What would, if we weren't able to, what would prevent our citizens? If they wanted to put a flyer in the newspaper that everybody gets or in their mailboxes to pay for the media marketing, what would prevent a citizen from doing that? I mean.
Your franchise agreement with your waste company would be the only barrier.
But that's between us, that's between us and.
We don't have a franchise agreement with our waste carrier right now.
Okay.
We separated the two last year, and I made sure, and so I know from my lawyer, and I know you guys put in for the RFP, and then what it wasn't communicated with you guys is that we were even having it on the agenda, so you weren't here to correct me.
My reading is we screwed the picture. But we're here now, yeah. And we actually, we didn't have that purpose when we first put that out, our media, so our case is only bad.
Well, I think the last time it came up, that there was an issue that our ordinance required a can, which at the time it was just bags, and now there's a can, so that's eliminated. And then it was the concerns about the landfill and our contract with our garbage pickup. Those, really why it didn't go anywhere. It wasn't because we don't wanna offer it to serve to people, but we had to just.
And it sounds like, nobody deals for us, again, it comes a little bit hard for obvious reasons, comes a little bit harsh, so it costs us much money to buy cans. A lot more expensive than the bags, but we don't even, the cans cost more than thirty bucks, that's just getting some of them.
I will be meeting with our city attorney and our city manager next Tuesday, and we'll go over those two questions and see what we can come up with. If we see that we, this is a possibility, we'll put it on the agenda again and present it before the council for some type of approval, so.
Go ahead, Derek. I'm driving, I'm very, I really agree with what Vince is saying too, and just because, you know, there's tons of people in my community that pour their plastics in cans and everything and then take them to a recycling facility anyway, and those don't end up in the landfill, and so to me, it feels a lot like, you know, there's, they couldn't do that. And I don't feel like they could do that, and I don't feel like allowing them to do business in our city would necessarily, you know, it's a lot, just a lot for easier to take up those recyclables.
I agree in the free market approach, meaning that I as a, you know, as a resident group wherever, shouldn't be able to give somebody my plastic bottle if I want to. I'm just talking about more if we want to not form a partnership, but even endorse Recycle Ops, then we would wanna, we would wanna answer those questions and then make a motion that we would kind of get behind them and help spread the word. Otherwise, if it's allowable by law with, you know, just the individual to make that decision for themselves, and you do all the advertising, there's no endorsement from the city, then that's a win-win attitude. But I personally would like.
It's clearly a win-win for us to be on the same page, so.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, on the advertising, if we do this, is that, would we want to let people aware through their bills, their water bill?
That's been very effective for us.
That's what I'm thinking, is so we would need, that's probably what.
That's why we need the approval, we're going to endorse some.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is we're gonna send that out, say, this is an option if you're interested. It's not anything with the city, but we endorse this, if you would like to be involved, this is the cost. And this is why, you know, like they, the thirty setup is so you get the can instead of, you know, just having bags because we want, you know. I just think we need to make sure.
And what happens if you sign a simple contract that helps that?
I don't think, I don't know that we need that so much other than just making sure people have the cans.
So personally, if you came to my house tomorrow, I would subscribe probably, you know what I mean? Without being affiliated with the city or anything else, so.
So would we.
Can I write you down?
We're one out, we're ninety-nine.
I'm a mentalist, crazy guy, but I'm telling you right now, I see a lot of plastic bottles and a lot of waste around, and I just, if there's a better use for it, it could be reused.
Thirty more sites, you know, such a big export, it's Texas, in areas that you wouldn't expect to care about recycling. And there's ten to twenty percent of every population that really does care.
You know, I just like that it's a choice, because I know in some areas they require it. My brother's up in Salter, and they require you have to do this, and if you don't, you get, there's penalties and fines, and I don't want that. I wanna opt for that. For people to have a choice, if they wanna do it, great, if they don't.
People that choose to do so recycle. So our continuation rate is like.
It's the mask, no mask?
Right, exactly.
Grabbing city, I mean. Half of the people don't care, it's second trash, it's just whatever. It's, there's a subscription program, it's people that sign up, they care, they want to do right, they do do it right because they're paying for it. Well, they know they're paying for it, everyone's paying for it, let's be clear about that. But they know they're paying for it.
Yeah, and they get to choose whether or not. So I appreciate you coming there, I really do, answered a lot of questions. Looks like we're quite a bit further along than when we were last time this came up, with that a few answers that we need, or questions that we need to answer, and so we'll let you sit those out and then let you know.
It's two hours late, so I'm happy to come.
That's why I was curious about if you'd be willing to come again when we get back on the agenda, because I think it's important for you to be here.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Extra Mile Day proclamation, Lee?
Yes.
Do you wanna take the lead on that?
Sure, happy to. So Extra Mile Day is a national thing that they ask cities and towns to participate in, which is basically just declaring November first of every year is Extra Mile Day, a day to recognize people who go above and beyond in service to their communities and to remind people to serve in their communities. So we have passed this proclamation a lot of times in the past in Roosevelt City. The proclamation essentially just states that we see the need for service opportunities in our community, and we see the need to recognize people who serve in our communities. The mayor and I discussed this, and as we have done once in the past, we plan to put the proclamation into place, declare November first as Extra Mile Day, but we also solicited nominations from residents of people in our community who should be recognized for the service that they provide, and we plan to issue three Extra Mile Awards at the November council meeting.
And we already have four nominations?
Four or five, yes.
And last year, I think we did this last year, and it seems like sometimes you get the same people nominated for the same things over and over, and this year it's been really neat to see some of the people that are doing, you know, a lot of service in our community, providing service to others, you know, just reaching out, being friendly, being neighborly, that aren't in the limelight, but it's pretty. but it's pretty neat to read the stories and things like that. So this year, I don't know, I've really had a lot of fun with it this year, and so I'm I'm excited. Obviously, we need to get council approval to to declare it as uh that we're going to do it, but we've already started the ball rolling on it, so we're on.
I just had a question, with the five hundred extra mile, is that five hundred people, five hundred?
Five hundred cities.
Cities. Oh, five hundred extra mile cities, okay, so we the, do we know the other cities that are involved or are listing somewhere?
I can give you the list.
I just be curious, you know?
Yeah, they have a website that lists.
I'd be more just with cities in Utah or not, just out of curiosity more than anything, but just like mostly Utah, just the other cities, if they're not, maybe that could be an encouragement if we're doing it, or as long as we're doing it, we should encourage others to think, so I think it's great.
One of the, one of the thoughts I had too with this extra mile days, doing something during the summer, but doing something likes as far as city beautification. Uh and you know, yards, you know, people that are taking care of their yards, people that are doing a good job, you know, and that things clean, tidy, nice and nice and neat.
They used to give awards in the city back when I first moved in.
Yeah, we'd like to start doing that again, and so I I think council would very near assign the city beautification.
No, I.
Who's the other one that's assigned? Okay, so you two, maybe that's something to think about during the summer, next summer?
No, I think that's true, like you're.
We have our city plan during the spring, but maybe, you know, midsummer or something like that, if we could do the same thing, do nominations for have people that are really going the extra mile as far as, you know, keeping their um video or explain.
Yes. So why do we have to limit it to three?
We don't, but. No, usually, you know, first of all, you don't want to, I mean, if we wanted everyone in one year, it'd take a really long time in the council meeting, and then you wouldn't have any for next year, but it's just three's been kind of the standard, status quo for a while. And uh maybe we can do an honorable mention and then give awards to others, I don't know. But uh what do you think, I I can see you're kind of thinking something there.
Well, I mean, I just, we're always into the first, second, third, because of the Olympics, you know, bronze, gold, silver, but well, I mean, why not just make it five or ten? Ten, if it was ten in the city, it would still make, it would spread the the recognition throughout the community, which adds a better atmosphere and attitude towards what the city's doing as a whole. Um and then it would just allow people to be recognized, you know, when you limit it to three, I don't know, I just.
I think the problem, the more people that you do at one time, the more, from year to year, you'll get the same people nominated, and so I think limiting it will kind of curb some of that, but.
Yeah, I'm open to that, to whatever.
I'm wondering if who evaluates the winners, if you do have three or five or whatever.
What we usually do is um, how could we do that in the past? I think it was just, it was down to to me, I think.
Um so what I would recommend, I'm I'm kind of with Vince, I don't know that we should have three, I think we should evaluate and look at it, and maybe one year you do five, or one year you do two, or you know, whatever it is that you feel, because I don't want to leave people out, but I'd say, don't maybe hold them up.
By, you know, unless we get an overwhelming amount.
No, no, I'm just saying, I just think instead of putting a number on it, why don't we just evaluate this, if if we're evaluating those and say, hey, these five look really good, or these four, or these two, or whatever it happens to be, then you have a limit, but you also don't feel that you have, you know, because some might be, you know, some might be, you know, out, you know, extra mile off the chart where others are, you know what I'm saying?
I do, I do see what you're saying, so let's do this, I think, and I I feel like what you've said is is fair. Unless we give them uh an enormous amount, let's say that whoever's nominated, because if somebody takes the time to nominate someone, I mean, it's like leaving a good review, you're going to leave a bad one before you leave a good one.
Right.
Right, so um maybe if it's within five or ten, then we just do them all. And if it gets to be more than that, then maybe we'll look at that, but that, does that, does that sound overwhelmingly?
I don't think so.
How much are the plaques that we use, I mean, that's not that much, what, ten?
We did, like, we did a fairly nice acrylic award, but it wasn't very expensive, and the more you order, the cheaper they are, honestly.
Okay.
So we didn't do more than, the the way that the number three came about is that that's what the extra mile committee recommends. They said like, choose three extra mile heroes in your community, which is how we got to three the first time. But we don't have to stick with that by any means, we're free to do whatever we want.
Well, I just think what you, I just think we do what we want, and if there's five, let's do five.
And then I did, I don't know what you guys think, but I I would lean towards a local business certificate instead of a plaque that's going to end up.
Maybe both.
Burning somebody's.
I like a plaque.
Some people don't get awards very often.
But maybe we do both. At some. A certificate, you go on each and it's gone, a plaque at least, you can help put it in, it's a conversational piece. But let's do, let's try to keep it, the thing of it is, is we don't, we want to make it a special thing too, and so.
Right, I agree.
Let's just have every, let's, everybody gets a win, a winner, a paper's in place, a trophy, yeah.
With one to one, everybody deserves.
That's true, right.
You can always rate you, even I say that we had a couple of dollars on the water bill and we had a staff.
Then the person who wants to get the project here has to step the bar up to get one, kind of go that direction.
Let's, let's see what we end up with, we've had four or five, I think that's.
It's either four or five, I can't remember for sure.
I think that's reasonable, let's.
Call it three plaques and then a twenty dollar gift or ten dollars, I think, really, yeah, a little business. And that still recognizes the top three and everybody else gets a.
Let's do like we do with everything, three to five. I work, I read a five. We'll go three to five, because really, if there's just five that that get nominated, then let's do five. If there's ten, let's cut it back.
Some of the times you're going to have the same one dominated for the same thing.
We won't allow that now.
Well, in the same year, there might be multiple people dominating the same person. Or you might get four or five people turning a thing, but it's actually only three.
Well, maybe in the future, or maybe how we decide that, I don't know if the people would like their names out there and say, here's who's been nominated, let's have a vote, and that's like a, if you don't.
I do think we should have it, because I would think we need to.
Yeah, and and I I would say maybe the ones that are on city beautification, same type of thing, maybe.
I'd be happy to be involved in it, so.
I'll run those through you two, I don't think it needs to be a whole council decision, but I think as a committee, I don't know, we can look at that and make some decisions. Let's do that.
Do you need a motion to go ahead and? I will move that we support the extra mile day proclamation and that we give an award up to five, like most five, three to five people uh that go the extra miles within the city of Roosevelt, because we appreciate their service, et cetera. I don't know, is that?
Sounds great to me. I'll second it, but I have a question.
Okay.
Why, why can't we make a motion to do this and not have to do it every year? I don't know. Anyway, that was just my thought, is, why, if we're going to support it, why don't we just report it and say?
Wait, you didn't say this year.
Yeah, I didn't say this year.
I thought next year we were going to motion, or we don't have to have as much discussion. Okay, uh so we have a motion and the second with the question, and the question's answered, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, motion passes, we are doing, all right, Lexi Paul policy, um Scott, will you come up and um give us a rundown of that?
Absolutely. So I have a bunch of staff, we set up a meeting with Lexi Paul to kind of look at what the features are of Lexi Paul. You kind of put this, put the, push us into the future of policy and procedure. So currently, the city uses Lexi Paul with our city police department. This is kind of the future of policy and procedure. Right now, Lexi Paul has moved, has moved to the municipal policy side, they have fifty-three modules that are standardized. So basically, you have state law, federal law, and best practices, so they build all that policy for you. Also, they'll, what they'll do is they'll take and integrate your current policy and deconflict it with all of these state and and local policies, and then build a new policy procedure based off that. Um so we sat down, the mayor, a bunch of the staff, and they actually gave us a demonstration on this. There's some major advantages going to this, some of that is archiving. So anytime a city manager goes in and alters a policy, it archives it. So it says, this person at this time on this date modified the policy from this to this. So then you know how your policies have been progressing over years of time. Also, the nice thing about this acknowledgement, right now, we give our employees uh documents saying those uh recent policies and procedures. The courts have shown that is not acceptable practices. We have to continually train on policy and procedure and make sure they're actually know the policies, this does that for you. So every single policy that comes up in this, the user has to go in and acknowledge every single one of the policies, and then also they have what they call DTVs, or daily training bulletins, that go out monthly. So they they get those daily, they have to complete those monthly, and it's it's a five-second thing, you read, it's a test on a policy question, and then they go ahead and they take the test. And this is a continual basis. I come from the law enforcement side, this is what we've been doing for years, now it's kind of coming to the civilian side, and um it's a phenomenal system. I think it's with what we're dealing with here, I think it's where we should be moving to. Um the other part to this is the state and federal stuff. There there are proven uh policies and procedures out there that the attorneys will stand behind if we ever have any type of legal actions and those types of things. Um.
Scott, just also, um it it's a yearly subscription, subscription, but at any point in time when we want, say, you know, we we're done, we still own our policy manual at that point in time, it's not something that we don't have access to. The other thing though with the subscription is they're continually looking at new uh legislation, uh laws that have been implemented and those types of things, and we're updating and updating our policy as we go versus going five to ten years and being like, oh man, this is conflicting with what state code is now, we need to fix that. Yearly, and they'll, they'll actually, it it'll flag our policy and say, your policy's out of date. This is something that you need to change based on new legislation or something like that, so we're always up to date with current laws, current all of that.
Yeah, and so what basically what that does is when there's a new update on the federal or the state level, they send an acknowledgement to whoever your administrator is, they go in and review the policy, and if it fits, if that's what you want, you could use the modifications if you need to, you go in and accept the policy, and then it immediately pushes it out to the employees of the city, and they actually have to go in and acknowledge the policy. And so it's all electronic, it's all streamlined, um it's it's kind of where cities are going to down for municipal policies. It, because if you look at it, so if I was uh not to, we were not to go this direction, you're looking at Melissa, me, the department heads, you're looking at hundreds of hours of building, updating policy. So four thousand dollars a month subscription to do that, or sorry, a year to do that, is a minimal cost of what it would cost department heads in or HR to keep that policy manual up to date.
Yep, and you and you touched on the price, so.
Yeah.
So forty-five hundred dollars a year is what it costs to to maintain a subscription, and then there would be a one-time ten thousand one hundred ninety-three dollar uh initiation fee, which would cover them taking our policy and integrating it with Lexi Paul, and going through and doing all the research and matching our policy up with theirs, and then they would come back to us and say, here's where your, here's where the conflicts are, here's what you have, here's what best practices are, if you want us to change that, if you want to keep it the same, and so they would do all the late work for us. Um for me personally, sixteen thousand dollars to get our policies almost up to date immediately is cheap. And then an ongoing forty-five hundred dollars a year is, I feel reasonable for for what we get.
The other part of that is that deconfliction, so at Harriman City, they're going through the same process. So the police department had a clause in it where it superseded the city policy, because they didn't have Lexi Paul at the time, so the police department policy was in contradiction with the city policies. I think we're in the same boat here with some of that stuff, they'll go in and take that out, they'll deconflict those policies, so the police department doesn't have different policies than what the city has. And so if they do all of that for us, do all the deconfliction, and then we come back, go to the manual, it, by doing that and paying that, it gets us up and running a lot quicker uh than me and Melissa having to go through that policy rewrite, do those types of things. Lexi Paul will do that for us, and then we just go through and make the monitor adjustments that we need to in the policy.
Um you mentioned the training for this, for the staff, they basically go on, either read or watch, and then they click that they acknowledge uh that they so that there's, there's documentation right there to say, you know, they log in as who they are, they go and do it, and then that says they now understand the police that have said they read, whether they did or not, it's in the trail, now protects the city, right?
Exactly, and so matter of fact, department heads will have access, they can go in and pull up their departments and see who's been doing those DTVs, and then they can get after them, so that'll be part of a requirement, those are up to date every month. You know, when it comes to raises and those types of things, those things will have to be done before any COLAs cost a living, performance evaluations, that will be part of the requirement to make sure those are done, so. But that, yeah, the tracking system is awesome, um just like the DTVs are just a quick, hey, this is a scenario, A, B, C, D, this, what, best answer, and it tracks all of that for uh the city.
You better read it, Grant, and not just guess A, B, C, or D.
My question is, that was about the height of a smirk on there. It's going to be on the next quiz.
Yeah, I know, but it's got to be on the Lexi Paul, you need to have that policy. So, but and so, I I mean, sometimes in policy, you have, there's things with the city you have to create on your own, we have unique things about those that we do differently. This program also allows for those policies to go in there, to implement, you know, the state, federal, we don't want to get away from, their general practices, like drug testing standards, sexual harassment, those types of things, we don't want to vary and do modifications to those types of policies, and we want them, their attorneys, to be updating those. We shouldn't be doing that, the general practices and stuff around here, we can do the modification of those policies, but outside of that.
But what I, what I like, even though we have the flexibility of mod- modify, I mean, we can modify all the policies, they're just going to tell us which ones we shouldn't.
Yep.
And uh but the thing I like about that is even on the general policies that aren't, that aren't dictated by state code or federal code, they are still going to give us all the experience that they have from all the other cities of best practices and those types of things, to help us modify and implement uh those general policies that are, you know, not ready to.
Should we ask Kurt, the money man, are we good?
Uh yes, we would allocate it by the department, um but I think as Scott said, the, it's an investment either in Scott and Melissa's time or something like this, and I believe it's going to be a lot more cost-effective with this than.
And then, and then time-wise, I mean, Melissa, they have to, so say we were just to buy the module, the four thousand dollar module, and then I would have to do the implementation with Melissa. You're probably looking at a year rollout, year and a half rollout for us to go through, build our own policies. If they do it, we can get that up and running a lot quicker. And so it just makes sense to let them go through it, um and then we, the nice thing is, we can go through, once our policies are injected and decide, okay, do we want to keep this policy, do you want to go to something else, those types of things, and that would be a collaboration with everybody. Okay, what are the, what are the best practices, and where do we want to go with policy as a city?
My personal opinion too is, the sooner we get it done, the less likely, likely we are to have other incidents, like doing the animal shelter or anything else that could eventually happen. Once we get everything in place, we're not going to be, instead of chasing a tail, we'll be ahead of the curve, and instead of putting out fires, you know, just be ahead of it. And of course, some people like putting out fires.
It's an insurance policy, basically what we're doing right now, we're we're getting all the best practices from across the United States, we're implementing them here in the hopes to prevent anything happening.
So this is mainly for just the administrative side of the city, it's not the police department for the citizens, this is more administrators?
Yes, this is, this is just for city employees, this is practices for the employees and those types of things. Um the police department's a little bit different, they have policies regarding, you know, high speed pursuits, evidence handling, those types of stuff. The police department's a little bit different, they have policies regarding, you know, high speed pursuits, evidence handling, those types of stuff. The police department's a different animal than what, these are just policies and procedures for city employees that they have to follow.
So, okay, this. So does that cover all of our municipal codes, as in how the city council operates? And, or are we just talking about that one or two pages that we talked about for how an employee will behave?
So, no, so it's, so the policy manual, so it's everything that's within that policy manual.
And how many pages is?
Fifty-three pages, yeah. But then.
So we're adding, so $14,000, $15,000 to initiate a 48-page and maintain accuracy in a 48-page document. From $4,000 a year.
But it'll be different than that when we're done, I guarantee that, because I'll be honest, our policy right now doesn't cover as much as it probably should. And there'll probably be a lot more to it by the time we're done, because, I mean, yeah, there's just a lot more to it.
And you added the questions for the employees to answer to check, verify, so that's, that's an extra step that's involved in this. It's not just the document, it's also the verification that the employees at least have been held accountable for the understanding of the policy in their area, whatever, whether it's, you know, Kirby and, you know, whoever, that they understand and know the policy, right?
It's actually like liability issues, so say the sexual harassment policy, right? So say we have an employee that does something down that line. They can go in and say, did they acknowledge it, did they have DT training on this? Yes, that then goes into HR and they say, well, I didn't know about that. Well, on this day and this time, you acknowledged this policy. We have four training DTVs on that and you're gonna tell me that you didn't understand the policy. So off the paper policy, there's no way to know that. We give them a piece of paper, they sign that piece of paper and they say, yeah. But then they come into an HR, they're in trouble, well, I didn't know that. Well, there's no way to prove that they did not know that on the HR side. This is really, not only is it policy, it's accountability on our staff and us to protect the city and the liability of the city. So it's twofold, it's more than just policy.
If you look at the litigation the city's been in in the last couple of years, especially with staff or anything, anything to do with staff, that $16,000, well, actually, it's $14,600. I think that on the purchase order, it's $15,000 is what they, so they rounded up. It's minimal compared to what we've spent in litigation and, you know, dealing with HR issues. Part of that is now we have Melissa, she's helping out quite a bit with that. But the other part of that is just not having policies, good policies or not following good policies. And so this is gonna, I think this is gonna help $15,000 the first year and then by, you know, $5,000 a year after that.
How long has the police department been in charge?
I'm not sure how long you guys have been doing it.
Rick, how long have you been using it?
Four or five years.
So did this, were we using this in the circumstance of the one employee that's, was it helpful?
And. You know what, we signed up right after that.
Okay.
That's why. Let me interject with that a little bit with Rick. Police policies are different than HR policies. So I'm guessing that the police department side did not have the HR modules that municipal halls, municipal halls used to can have. And you can correct me if there's wrong with, no, they weren't, all right. So that, that would be my guess is, because the police is very specific to police and not HR. That's where this policy is gonna come into place to where hiring practices, termination practices, those types of things will come into play and that's where we've built it here. It wouldn't come in on the police side. It, police is a completely different model dealing with different circumstances. This is built for municipal halls.
So if we pay the $10,000, I noticed on the top part, it says the subscription is from, you know, just an example, like we use November. Will the subscription date start when our implementation service is through? Because if it takes them six months to finish the implementation process, we've already lost half a year of subscription services.
Yeah, so right now, they've said what they would do. So if we were to sign up with them and you were approved and I think give us this until the end of this month for free, and then that one would start. There's gonna be a lot of work going into this to get it up and running. I'm guessing the both of those would start about the same time.
Okay, so we pay $10,000, then when, when is the process, the implementation service completed?
That, that's gonna a lot depend on us and how Melissa and I or whoever's working on them get through the policy. I, I wouldn't want to put a timeframe, you don't want to ever rush policy. That's, that's the worst thing you can do, that's how you end up with very poor policy. And so I would never rush that process.
But I think what Vince is saying.
Oh, I got you.
Because it's gonna take however long to, to get the policy to where we can actually use it. And then we already, and then, so are they gonna start filling us the, the yearly subscription after, after the policy's done?
That's actually a good question, I didn't ask him.
The $10,000 fee to do that, and then we have the $4,000, which is an annual fee. So if we, even if we're waiting on the annual service until they've done the $10,000 service for us, since they're two different fees. Seems like that would be a difficult thing.
Yes, my question is, if they, that's what we'll shoot for. If they don't do that, it's a make or break detail, and so that's what we gotta look at, so.
Have you run this by Melissa as well?
She was on the phone. Yeah, so she was actually, she was there during the presentation and I'll speak for her. She would suggest we go to full implementation.
I, I figured, I just wanted to make sure she was in, but if I figured she was, I just didn't remember.
Is this something that Grant is, will he be interacting with approval of the implementation service and all that stuff too?
I think, I mean, he's.
As much as we want him to be involved, I'm sure.
Exactly, I think if it comes down to legality or something like that, absolutely, he would be involved in somewhere within the process.
I really like the idea of having, I mean, I think it's worth the money for liability purposes and also just it'll help us build a good, strong city policy. And, you know, so I'm all in favor of it. With that, if there's any other questions or comments, we entertain a motion. All motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion. When I ask for a motion, sorry, I don't ask for a motion to approve or to.
Oh, I'll motion to approve, okay.
I'll second, okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Barrett and a statement by Councilman Boozabart. Let's see, we'll call them, anytime we, well, we'll just go. Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Boozabart?
Yes.
Councilman Barrett?
Yes.
Councilman Allen?
Yes.
Five yeses. Ms. Animals. We will go ahead and implement that. And I think to Vince's comment, we'll definitely need to see if we can go.
Try to negotiate it.
Say, hey, we'll play the gentleman, take the implementation cost right up, right? And see if we can postpone the subscription date. And then once that's done, we'll start the subscription with them. Okay, try to go that route if not. Yeah, I appreciate you trying to do that, I think, so.
One thing that we talked about, and I want to take just a few seconds on this, is once we get the policy in place, then we can look at some of our ordinances and we, and we wanted to get something in place solid before we start tweaking our ordinances, because we want them all to match, we want them all to coincide, we want them all to be cohesive and, and so soon as we get the policy in place, then we're looking at any of the ordinances that deal with staff or deal with us according to those policies. And we'll start working those and making everything match and finally get everything completely straight, so. Let's move on, city manager, vehicle stipend approval. When Scott hired on, there, we have a policy in place, we just have to, he wanted to bring it up to council. There's a policy in place for department heads to receive a stipend for a vehicle versus city providing a vehicle for him. The stipend is $700 a month, that's for any department head. And he's just asking that we approve his where he's not a typical department head. We just, he just asked that we motion to approve that policy applied to him.
We approve that with the city manager on the list, I'm pretty sure you agree with that.
But it requires a city manager approval for department.
Is it $800 a month?
It's $800 a month. So underneath the, I guess what Scott's going is where it requires city manager approval. Per my contract, anywhere it says that, I have to go to council and mayor for approval. And so that, I'm making sure I follow those rules where if I have to approve something, I can't, I don't want to approve that for myself. I need to come before the body for that approval.
So we approved it, we just have to prove it for you, because.
I thought we had his name today, eight through E. He was, we were like, how come the city manager's not in there? Because technically, he's not even authorized, because this, this has to be the old one, I thought we changed it.
I, I have the other one.
No, this is the one on that here.
Yeah, this is, that's the one. I mean, that was the decision, right? It's like, why would the city manager not be approved for?
I thought it was a way, I didn't know if it was a yes or no.
We had that in Grant, but it's not.
So we're in the interview. Yeah, so do, I guess the question is.
It's there, it's just listed as the. Our city manager with approval of the governing body, it's listed, it's just not listed at ABCD.
Right, oh, so that's.
They're governing body, so that's what we're doing.
I'd move we approve, let's get on. I'm just trying to follow the rules.
Thank you, Scott.
I move we approve.
Same. We have a motion by Councilman Boozabart, a statement by Councilman Allen. All in paper, any opposed? Same motion passes. Assistant city manager position review, who decided to go another route.
We did, right. So I talked to Ryan, I'd asked him to step in as assistant city manager. I thought this was appropriate, you know, come before the body, you know, what direction I've kind of gone on that. He's recently accepted to be assistant city manager and I've also offered him the salary of $95,000 a year to perform that function. He's also gonna hold water source down with that title and then he'll also have some other responsibilities. He'll be over parks and recreation and then also planning his own facilities. So that's kind of for the increased duties, that's what the salary would be for, so.
And just by making comment, that's where he has been more or less while he's been doing the interim stuff. So it just maintains the salary of what he has been getting paid, is that accurate?
Actually, it's a reduction of what he was making.
There you go.
I like that.
And with the, the performance incentives that the council will come to them.
Yeah.
That were, or Scott's proposed is.
You know, we, we did give him a, a little bit until he finished out, more than what he was thinking before.
Yeah, that was my recommendation.
And so that's what he's talking about. It's less than what.
Right.
So really, without that, it, that's where it was at.
About the same.
Where it's at.
Can I check with Kurt? He said we have it in the budget to do it, so check with him first and so that's kind of the.
We have some staff here, does anybody oppose? I support, I support.
Can I get, can I get 10 of that? Yeah, I can give you 10 bucks, you'll figure it out. I should go through Ryan. All right, Ryan, if you give 10 bucks, we provide a ticket.
This isn't something that comes before the council's approval. We really appreciate Scott and his transparency and what he does with the policy and what's going with the staff. It, it builds good relationships between the council and the staff and that's what we want. I mean, for a long time, it feels like, almost felt like the, each one on an island and neither knew what each other was anticipating or doing or, you know, expected. And I feel like for the first time in a long time since Ryan's come on as the, as the intern, that gap is closed to where we're just one of the same, and that's the way it should be, so.
And then also, I'd like to thank the department heads for showing up tonight, I'd asked them. I would like them to attend all council meetings, so if you guys have questions, there'll be family kinds of stuff that, of course, they're gonna have to attend. But I highly recommend that they come to council. So if you guys have any council for the, or questions for the department heads, they will, I'm hoping that they will be here in person and then we'll have direct answers at that time for you from the direct source.
I appreciate that, I had a question for Kirby earlier, because I'm always clarifying things.
Yeah, so I think this is a great time for the department heads to talk, the council stuff, to get information. And I want this to be where my, under my tenure here, count of the information that we have flows up. So if you guys can make the decisions you need to make with as much information as I can give you guys.
Are the non-salaried individuals being compensated for the time here? Are the non-salaried individuals being compensated?
Yes, absolutely, so they can, that can be handled two ways, whether that's through overtime or if they take a few hours off during that seven day pay period, if they go home three hours early or something. It will be, yeah, they'll be making sure they are taken care of during that time. I believe most of our departments have our salary. Rick, Kurt?
Um, most, not all, most, no.
So, Kirby, I have a question for you. Well, a question, I just got talking, so I received, and I'm glad you're here, I received a, that thing to sign.
Yes.
From, from, for the chip install.
Yeah.
And I think, I didn't feel good about signing that. The reason is, is because it's on our purchase orders.
Yes.
And if you can just let the engineering firm know that if, once they settle on a price and they're done with a project, that they'll communicate that with you. And then we can get it on the purchase orders, as soon as it's approved by the council, then they can sign me, send me the document signed. I almost signed the document ahead of time.
Correct.
And I just didn't feel right about it, and then that's why I called you, I'm like, is this done?
Right.
But in a meeting like this, then you can report and say, hey, this is all done, this is about how much screen costs on the purchase orders.
Right.
And then I know when they send me over the documents signed, we've already talked about it, it's been approved by the council. I just felt odd, well, one, because I wasn't a house.
But it is completely, you can talk. Eric got the lead, so.
Not, not, I would say call it a down, it's a very firm, but since you mentioned it, now we know. I'm just kidding. But ultimately, in the future, if you'll just let them know, to communicate, and any department head, when you have a project or something like that and it's a big purchase, just, if it cuts, have it come before council before it goes to my email. That way I don't sign something that hasn't been approved by the council.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Any quality issues with the, with the job?
Well, I, I didn't see any, they finished the striping Friday last and everything seemed to look good and come out good. They did do all the cracks and as we requested, you know, before and the patchings, so everything got done. There was a couple of change orders on there, one was a lane, I mean, it's sound. That was because it was so, just holes everywhere, we hadn't put an inch over there before we checked it because it would kind of be a waste to chip over something not bad. So we okayed that to happen and I discussed that with Ryan Clayburn before. They did that and then they had some allegations of fixing their south industrial area, their alle gated areas cracked. And there was a filler to be used, where they just chipped over that and it comes right back. This filler, they said would fill it in, so we went ahead and done that too. So the project would come out there and last longer.
Thanks, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, going back to Ryan's thing, how does Ryan feel about, because I know he was excited to give that to working on the wall or.
When Ed told, my smile's been a little bigger and it's bouncing off the walls. Apparently I feel better.
Since Scott's here, but about the assistant manager, you're okay?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I feel good about, I didn't know, you said you're set for, I like.
Well, one thing I've told the mayor a lot, dude, one of the biggest things I'm gonna, that I was going to miss was working with all the employees one on one and having a chance to interact with them, so I get to do that still. I, I feel like I've been blessed, even though 2020, I want to get it over.
Well, you did, you did a great job on your, so we appreciate it.
Called the department heads, did.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Everybody stepping up and doing a job we ask, we really appreciate what you guys do, we really do. Purchase orders and find that, well, we don't have quarterly review, but purchase orders, any questions on those?
I got my answer earlier, so I think we're good.
Well, actually, so, Bard River excavation was in charge of lighting on Fifth East as well, I guess. There's a couple lights on Fifth East that still flicker and I don't know, they've been doing that forever, but I, I assume that was probably not a part of their proposal, but.
Yeah, I don't believe that part was.
It seems like maybe Moonlight Electric could come out and take a look at those, because they turn off and then they turn on and they do that like all night long and my windows rack by it.
Is it the newer ones they put in?
No, it's the old ones, there's, there's old ones that are still there and.
And if you'd like, I can take care of that, I just give the whole number and call it in. They'll check it out and change a lot of that.
Just thought I'd bring that up since you got to work on lighting on our street.
Was the rectitude, are new doors on here, like those?
Um, actually, the rectitude is the new hangar door at the airport.
Oh.
That is material.
I just noticed you have the new door and it wasn't ours.
There's that, there's that, that was.
That was approved to city.
That was approved to city.
Right. I knew it was approved before. I just thought I hadn't seen him yet. So I gave him, oh, that was cool.
And that was Jones paint glasses, the doors.
Question on the hangar door. Did we go with the, we just fixed the old one that?
This is a replacement.
We're going to replace them. I'm glad because the old one is going to cost how much to fix?
Between $10,000 and $12,000.
So, yeah, and it and it needed replaced. So it's. Yes, Vince.
And we have somebody that wants to buy the old hangar door.
Oh, do you?
Yeah. For the right price. Calvin Roberts called and Calvin wanted to build a hangar. So they said, what are you going to do with the old one? I said, I'm sure somebody will tell you.
Nice.
We will.
I don't know.
They're taking off. That would save us.
In fact, you got to give them a really extreme unveil for doing all they would take off. That's actually, yeah. Probably save some of these.
So I move we approve the purchase. Unless there's other questions.
Perfect. I like that motion.
Did you get the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jay?
Now, reports really quickly from standing committees. Councilman Wright, do you have anything for it? Councilman White?
I have a couple things from the ULCP board meeting yesterday. There was a approval of 11% reduction to the third tranche CARES Act fund.
How much?
11%.
Well, that's not awful.
That could have been worse for us. Well, there there were two options. We could vote for a 10% or a 15%. So anything outside of Salt Lake and Utah counties, that CARES Act money was being distributed to the cities based on population. In Salt Lake and Utah counties, the county got that money. And some of that money got distributed. The first and second tranches got distributed. But they're not sure that any of the cities in those counties are going to get much of that money at all. In the rest of the state, the rest of the 27 counties, there were 10 communities that were identified as resort communities that have a small population of full-time residents. But they support a whole large population of, you know, visitors. And so the hit that they took because there wasn't the tourism and things going on, it it made it so they were quite a bit worse off than the rest of the state. And there were 10, 10 communities that were identified. They came up with a form that did that. I talked to the rural city manager. He was a little uncomfortable at the time just because there are areas in the state of unemployment and things that are, that are not really dealing with tourism, but just the depressed economy of oil and things like that. So unemployment, quite a few areas in the state have come back, but there are several of them still below, quite a bit below where they were. After he learned what the cities were, he went back and crunched some numbers, as the rural city manager did. And then he came to the conclusion that they were quite a bit better off than some of these identified. And his questions were answered, but it was, it was kind of a consensus among all the other board members that that we could spare a little bit to help out those that have been hurt more. So that's what it will end up being. There'll be, everybody will take 11% reduction in their third tranche funds. And those will be allocated based on, I think it's based on their actual budgets. And anything below 10 million gets 2.5%, and anything above 10 million gets 5% or something of that. It ended up being $3.5 million to divide between. Most of it's going to go to Mollab and Park City and the rest will get, so. So so that was approved and they'll move forward with that. I I think it still has to go through the approval of the forward that distributes that money. But they said, we don't want to be, we're okay with you deciding to do that, but we don't want to be involved in how that's divided and distributed. So most likely that will happen. The other thing that they talked about that, a little bit of a concern in the state is there have been approved public infrastructure districts. These are things that a developer can create a taxing district in a city or or wherever to pay for infrastructure.
A developer can do that?
Developer could do that with these public infrastructure districts. And at the current.
Does that have to go through the council?
At the current way it's written, it does not have to have city approval.
So who collects the tax on that? Or who collects it?
I'm not 100% sure how it works, but the the reason it was brought up is because there are cities that have these districts that exist in a county, in a town or their cities. And the residents that weren't there at the time of its creation, they buy houses, move in. They're like, why do I have this extra tax?
I've heard that. Stone gate.
And they come, they come to the city thinking it's the city's fault when the city has nothing to do with it. So they're trying to get that, they're trying to get those things so that they do have to come through the city. I don't know if that will happen or not. But the other thing that they brought up was if you don't have a policy in your city to deal with a public infrastructure district, you probably should look into that just so if something happens that way, you already are on top of the threshold.
That's on it. That's a nice inflection. We can create whatever we want through the process and make sure we get better in that.
But that's something we definitely want to be able to.
And we haven't dealt with anything here, but but I think as the cost of.
But can you imagine if some developer coming in and wanting to recoup their, because that doesn't cut to the city, I don't imagine.
No.
It goes back to the developers. So being able to create a substitution and tax basically those people a little bit more so they recoup their infrastructure cost.
Apparently it's a pretty big deal in Colorado and it has been approved so they can be created in Utah. And they, there are some of them that do create, but they're still trying to work out some quirks that aren't working out so well. But we just need to be aware of that. So if somebody came to us wanting to, or nobody tried to do one, but that one was approved.
Well, I may need to make sure it's in policy, but that'll, that'll need to be in an ordinance.
Exactly. I was going to say.
And I'm probably going to tell you about that. That needs to go to an ordinance or it'd be.
So will you, Ryan, will you look at that and bring that up on Tuesday morning meeting with Grant? You just make sure.
They use acronyms for everything. So PID might get you, in case I wrote it down, it's title 17?
Or 16?
17, 17.
That's all I have from ULCP. Thanks.
Do you have any?
I don't have any standing committees. So I would like, Lee, can you make a note about the family dinner that Park Patty gave for next year, that, you know, the one that the Northeastern did? I'd like to do that. Because we talked before about maybe the city sponsoring something that they weren't going to probably be able to do it. But maybe we could do something conjunction or whatever. Anyway, just a thought. I don't, we don't need to talk about it now, but I thought it was kind of cool that I think, you know, we get more interest and of course by then maybe COVID will be done. We could do it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
And Councilman Barrett? I guess I have one question. I don't have city managers. Is finance an odd meeting? We know the time of that meeting is still the same.
Yeah.
Can you just send me the invite? Those, because I'll definitely listen. I don't have it on my calendar and I'll probably like, hopefully I'll be sent on first message, but I'm not going to recurring events, but. Oh, and also just one other question. It's not a report, but I do have a question about the RDA. You talked about doing a redevelopment.
Yep.
Area and we had to get approved from the school district and all the other government entities in the area. How's that? Have we, we need to practice on that?
Because Ryan and I were trying to hold down the fort. That one, but we did bring it up in our, not this week, but last, two weeks ago, meeting, I think we talked about it. And anyway, it's in our notes to get started.
I like what you're doing with that and you just hope we.
Yeah, some will pick up all that up on that. It was back on the board for sure.
Okay.
The things for, because some of those things, it's like the cracks. And so I didn't remember. We need to be.
Councilman Allen, do you have anything for us?
From committee meetings, I just noticed you canceled the parks and rec. When you already scheduled, do you mind?
We were saying when our scheduling was best for everyone.
Shoot, man.
He'll, he'll, he'll be along.
That's all.
Without the committee, the, the heads, department heads?
The department heads and then there's the park and recreation, maybe just with the parks and rec.
I, if, if you send, somebody invited to send me one, if I can go, I'd love to go. Well, I go to the safety one and I go to the department head ones. Just whatever. I know she canceled the one, the department head one, but.
Well, we have to be a little bit careful when you're.
Right. I don't need to go if it's going to be a problem. I just.
The only thing I was going to say is if we have a quorum at any one of those meetings, we're kind of in trouble. So.
Right. Yeah. To make sure.
We're just restructuring the scheduling of what fits best with Scott and staff. So we're not, because Tuesdays are getting kind of drowned a little bit because of one meeting after one meeting and then we're trying to go to council.
My only suggestion would be to whatever, whatever areas you're assigned to go to those meetings, like the department head meeting. That's one that anyone, like if all the council decides to show up at that one, that we can, not to say that, but the council should be given at least in their, the problems they're assigned to, that information.
If I see two in a year, I'll just leave.
Fine. I'm the only, I'm the only other one.
Right. I'm just saying if I see two in a year, I'll just leave.
So anything else, Councilman Allen? Okay. Let's go to our report from our city manager. You have anything else for us?
Well, actually, I just want to thank the staff. It's, you know, they've been phenomenal. We've done a lot this week. We got the org chart down and we get sat down, got the legislative policy spun up. I've been working with Kurt, giving some other checks and balances in with our POs and our, the way we're handling the POs and stuff like that, or who the mayor make sure when we come to audits and stuff like that, that we're cover multiple signatures on POs, that type of stuff. So working through a lot of stuff. I'm super excited to be here. Honestly, the staff here have been freaking phenomenal. Got to get them props and they did, they they helped your city up. Boy, you were down a couple people. So I got to throw some props their way. They did a phenomenal job.
They did.
And I look forward to working with them and, you know, working through these problems and just making this a great place to work. And I appreciate all you guys. So.
Thank you. Good to have you here. If nothing else, we do have a closed session tonight that we have personnel that we're going to discuss in that closed session and also property acquisition. And so if there's nothing else, would entertain a motion to go into closed session and then come out of closed session when we're finished with that.
We'll be going to closed session. We talked about personnel and property acquisition and then come out of closed session when we're finished.
Okay.
I have a motion by Councilman.
And a second by Councilman White? Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Bozenbar?
Yes.
Councilman Barrett?
Yes.
And Councilman Allen?
I didn't know, like, but maybe you jumped.